Pledge of limitations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ebernetti, Bush, Dauphin, Levac, Motola, O'Connell, Rogers, absent, Skolnick, Tedford Andrew, Tedford Jim, Wendis, Winkler.
Here.
Your honor, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody here for Citizens Forum? Seeing no one, let's move on. Presentations. We have two Memorial Day parades. First one is Sunday, May 26, 8:30 a.m., the Parade at the Tocqueville Congregational Church. It's a short walk to Mount Hope Cemetery for a ceremony. And then our regularly scheduled Memorial Day on Monday, May 27, at 10:00 a.m., parade steps off from Northeast School. If you plan to march, please make sure you RSVP. Upcoming events before you on the table are the invitations to the Rockville High School graduation ceremony, which is Wednesday, June 12, at 6:00 p.m. The event is held at Rockville High School. Included in your pack are directions for seating, of dignitaries, and arrival time and location. Please be sure to RSVP to this event. The Grand Army of the Republic, the JAR, has a ribbon-cutting event scheduled for Saturday, June 15, 2024, at 1:00 p.m. The event is to honor the Plum Brothers exhibit that will be unveiled. All are welcome. The museum is located on the second floor of the town hall. That is all I have. Brian, the consent.
Mr. Mayor, a motion to move the consent agenda as written.
Seconded by Mary Ann. Are we pulling any of them? No? All right. All those in favor? Unanimous. Brian, new business number one.
Mr. Mayor, the town council hereby authorizes the application and receipt of the Community Investment Fund 2030, Round Five Funds, in the amount of $250,000, and further authorizes Mayor Daniel A. Champagne or his designee to execute any and all documents for same.
Seconded by Laura. Nicole, you want to just give us an update on what this is?
Yes, through you, Mayor. We are looking at going for the second time for Round Five funding. This would be a planning grant. We did go for the Round Three funding, and we were denied, but the state did provide us with great feedback on how to improve the grant. So we are making those changes and having meetings with the state. And the grant would be planning for architectural engineering as well as a business plan to outfit the former senior center as a performing arts center.
Thank you. Questions on that? We went for this once before. Phyllis.
Thank you. Through you. I am just curious what the plan is for who will perform there. I think it's a great idea, but what is the...
This is just for the grant to actually get it going. For who's going to perform there isn't part of this.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Brian.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Just who's going to manage the grant? Who's going to manage the process?
Through you, Mayor. This is a joint department effort here, so it would be the Administration Office as well as the Planning and Economic Development Office.
Okay. As part of the grant, some kind of person to oversee or bring you guys together, or is it just the two groups, the two...
Yeah, it's going to be, the town's going to be the lead on this.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you. Good luck. We hope you get it.
Thank you.
We hope so, too. Anybody else? No? All those in favor? Unanimous. Brian, new business number two.
Mr. Mayor, the town council hereby approves the disposal of assets for the Vernon Department of Public Works as disclosed on the request for disposal of fixed, sorry, disposal of fixed assets forms.
Seconded by Jim. All right, we've got a few things listed here. You want to give us an update as to why we're getting rid of these?
Through you, Mayor. I'll start at the bottom of the list and work my way up. 2007 Ford Crown Victoria, it's just beyond its time. The bottom is, it was an ex-bully's car, and the bottom is pretty rusted out, and it's got a blown head gasket, and it's just not worth putting any money into.
We can give you Bondo. Just kidding. There's a big difference between this 2007 and our current cars that were spraying the bottoms, undercoating, isn't there?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, keep going.
Next vehicle through you, Mayor, is a 2009 Ford Expedition XLT. That was the Fire Chiefs old truck. And if anybody knows a little bit about the Ford Expeditions, excuse me, they rot extremely bad. They're just horrendous. And this is, this truck's pretty bad. Firewall is starting to go, and all the rockers are gone. Next is a 1986 John Deere Payloader, the 544D. This was our machine down at RCC. The transmission, there's a shaft inside the transmission, sorry, through you, Mayor, but there's a shaft inside the transmission that snapped that drives the hydraulic pump. That shaft is no longer available through any source.
Question.
The machine also has right around 36,000 hours on it. Next one through your mayor is a 94 E1 Pumper. That truck we replaced with a new Pierce. It's beyond its time. It's got a two-stroke Detroit Diesel in it. Very hard to get parts for it now. It's got an older Allison 540 transmission. Very hard to get parts for. And to keep it, we would have to keep it up on certifications, pump, and that kind of stuff. It's just not cost-effective. Next machine through your mayor is a 2003 Hollitt Man Lift. That is another machine that the parts are very hard to get. The whole electrical harness in that machine is run inside the boom, and it's probably about a 36 to 48 pair wire harness, and the insulation actually is disintegrating off it, so it's all bare wires inside the boom. And to replace the harness, you have to strip the whole boom apart. And it was, we had a price of around $42,000 to do it.
We didn't pay that for that, did we?
No.
I didn't think, I didn't think we did. We got a good price on that secondhand.
Yes. Yes. And we do have a newer one in service already.
Right.
And the last one is through your mayor is a 1986 Leboy Grader. It's lived its life. The table is all bent on it that holds the moldboard for grading. The transmission in it slips like crazy, hard to get parts for. And it's kind of a small machine for anything we do, and now we have a bulldozer that can grade 10 times better than that machine can grade.
I saw up north, they put plows on them. No?
Yes. That one's a little small.
Yeah. All right. Any questions? Phyllis.
Thank you. Maybe to you or through you, I'm not sure. When we dispose of this, are they sold for scrap? Is there, do we get any money for them? What happens to them?
They go out on a web, what's the name of the website? Public Surplus. And people make a bid on them. They can bid on them for the machine, the parts, anything they want. And we get hopefully as much money as we possibly can for them.
And to follow up, then, does that fund go into our general fund? Does it go back to the department?
General fund, because we bought the new pieces.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else? Anything going on disposal? Number one, if another department can use it, they have first dibs on it. And then, number two, it all gets, it all gets sold, and we maximize what we can get for it. If, you know, we look, think that if we get rid of any metal, if we can get more money for the metal itself, we'll scrap it. All right. All those in favor? Unanimous. Brian, number three. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Mayor, the town council hereby approves the purchase of a laser E-Series mower from Rockville Equipment in the amount not to exceed $15,710 for the Vernon Cemetery Department.
Seconded by Mary Ann. So one of their, one of the mowers is shot, and basically, we're looking for $15,710. That's from the cemetery fund? From the cemetery fund to purchase this new one. If you look at the three bids, you're going to notice that this is the higher of the three bids. And it's not just the machine itself, it's the service contract that goes with it. And that service contract, the value of the service contract more than makes up for the increase in cost. Any questions?
Do they have a ceremony for the other one?
Yeah. I can't, I can't think quick enough, sorry. Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you know what size this mower is?
Hold on. Does it make a difference?
Huh? No, I'm...
It's a zero turn. I know it's a zero turn.
It's a zero turn, it's a sit-down, zero turn.
Sixty. Sixty inches. That's why it costs so much.
Yeah, I was looking at the price, and I said it must have been a pretty good-sized mower.
Well, let's ask them why we didn't go to Kmart, but...
Because they closed.
They don't exist anymore. That's where I got my snow blower. It's still running. Barely, but it is. All right, any other questions on that? All those in favor? Unanimous. Ryan, number four.
Mr. Mayor, the town council, consistent with the Town of Vernon Personnel Rules and Regulations, Section 4.1b entitled "Job Descriptions," hereby adopts the job description of accountants.
Seconded by Mary Ann. All right, so we've always had an accountant on the books, and this is updating the job description, but we're looking to replace one of the other jobs with this. Dawn, you want to give us a heads up on that?
Yes, Mayor. The accountant position has existed for some time, but has been vacant based on a retirement for probably about 10 years. And we're looking to replace the finance analyst with the accountant position down at Water Pollution Control. The finance analyst position has been vacant since September.
All right, any questions on that? Basically, it was the needs of the department, that's why we're doing, going back to the accountant. All right. All those in favor?
No.
You fine? All right, all those in favor? Unanimous. Brian, number five.
Mr. Mayor, the town council hereby endorses the 90-day trial period for the corporate mailing services for the Board of Education and the Town of Vernon Mail Services.
Seconded by Jim. So this is a different way that we're looking at doing our mail. Currently, we use the, our mail machine downstairs, and essentially, it's expensive. So we, what we're looking at using, we went out to bid, and this company that would basically take all our mail, use their bulk postage on it, which would save us money. Did I hit that right, Diane?
Yes.
All right. Do you want to expand a little more on it?
Sure. Basically, during our budget discussions, we talked about shared services and looking at some of our contracts to see if we could get better prices even from the vendor that we're currently using. We went out to bid for mailing services, and no one bid, so not even our current vendor. So we had an alternative bid. A gentleman called and said that he offered services for mailing, but in a different way. So we went into discussions with him, and the name of the company is Corporate Mailing Services. They offer an alternative way to do our mailing. It saves staff time, and it should increase our efficiency. So through the research that shared services did, I can offer you this comparison of the two. So our current vendor is Pitney Bowes, and the new vendor potentially would be Corporate Mailing Services. Pitney Bowes uses our labor. We have to stamp the envelopes, we have to seal them, we have to fold the paper, put them in the envelopes, et cetera. All of the work is done by our labor. So by going with Corporate Mailing Services, we use their labor. They take the mail, they stuff the envelopes, they seal the envelopes, they put the postage on, they do certified mail, registered mail, return receipt requested, they do the whole thing. So none of our staff has to go to the post office at all. The second and the biggest piece is Pitney Bowes leases machines to us so that we could do the labor portion, putting postage on, et cetera. There's a service contract, and then supplies for all of the tapes that go on the envelopes, the ink. So that costs us $11,436 a year. Corporate Mailing Services doesn't have any leases, doesn't have any supplies, and doesn't have any service contract because they do it at a per-piece cost. So we compared two, actually, it was two years. Our postage cost average for the two years was $53,400. That's all the, all the departments, Board of Ed, everybody. With Corporate Mailing Services and their charges per piece, it's $39,800, and it's savings of $13,600 annually. Pitney Bowes requires that you terminate their contract within 90 days of the end, but you have to, you have to give them the notice. Corporate Mailing Services has a 30-day, no-questions-ask termination. You can decide 30 days you don't want them anymore, and you want to go back to the machines, we can do that. The other thing we decided to do was instead of terminating the contract with Pitney Bowes, we would keep it while we do the 90-day trial. All of the work would go to Corporate Mailing Services, but it would be seamless, so that if it doesn't work out, we can go right back to Pitney Bowes. The customer service aspect of it has been huge for us. We have difficulty getting the Pitney Bowes machine repaired. They have a fully automated phone system. You cannot talk to a person. So if you get very frustrated at that process, we have a postage meter that's locked because so many people use it. Only two people in the town can move money over. Once the money's expended, then we go in and we do it again. Well, you have to go through that system every single time you want to get the machine unlocked so that you can go downstairs and add postage. It's very time-consuming and frustrating. Corporate Mailing Services, like Ryan Business Systems, we would deal with their top three leadership people, and it's direct dial. You don't have to go through any kind of automated system at all, and everything that we've done with them so far has been spot-on. The owner of the company calls back and says, you know, if there's an issue, I want to know about it. So they're much smaller. Pitney Bowes is an international company. I can tell you that we interviewed three of their references. One was the Town of Manchester, the Town of New Canaan, and the Town of Danbury. And all of them were happy. They've all been with them for over five years, some as many as 10 years. We also asked them if they did any other cities. They have 20 cities that they do, and colleges. They do MCC and UConn. The difference in their per stamp or per-piece cost, it's 68 cents to go on our machine downstairs. It's 61 cents to go with Corporate Mailing Services. So we wanted to try a 90-day trial, just so that we can make sure that we didn't miss anything, make sure that the costs are what we've tabulated. Both Bill Meyer and Nicole, the mayor, Mike, have all been involved in our research and asking questions and trying to make sure that we don't, we didn't miss anything at all. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions. Laura.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you. When you said $13,000 in savings, was that also including the man-hours that it takes for your, for the employees to fold stuff, you know, prepare the envelopes and everything? Have you calculated any of that into your $13,000 savings?
Through the mayor? No, we have not.
So it could be actually more and free them up to do other, more important things?
Yes. I think for the, for the Board of Ed in particular, because they do so much more mail. In fact, they're the reason that we can go with this company, because their volume gets us to a point where they're willing to take us on as a customer, because the town's, the town's volume is much lower, but it would save a lot, a lot.
Great. I'm happy to see the efficiencies becoming helpful to the staff. Thank you.
Phyllis.
Thank you. Through you. Can you just talk to us a little bit about where they're located? How does our, like, right now, I understand the process here. How do they get what we mail?
Through the mayor. We, they are in Shelton. They have a warehouse, and they come every day to every location, come in the morning, and then if anyone has any mail that they need mailed, they can bring it here to Town Hall. You know, in their travels, everybody goes through Town Hall all the time to go to Finance. And the Corporate Mailing Services will pick up again at 3:00. They take it all to their warehouse, do all the mailing that they need to do, the envelope sealing and what have you. They personally deliver it in their trucks, along with a lot of other mail that they do, to the post office itself. And they have guaranteed us that if we mailed a letter from here ourselves and they mailed the same letter, it would get there a day earlier by their service than by us going through the post office.
That sounds great. And could you talk a little bit, again, through you, about the security? I mean, there's a lot of private things that we mail out.
Yes, through the mayor. This, we discussed this with the Board of Ed because we figured that they had the majority of those situations. They can, they seal everything, but if there's something that you don't want them to seal, it goes out in a special batch. For instance, the checks that we mail out to our vendors, and then the board does, too, those are pre-mailed, I mean, sorry, pre-sealed, because they're, you have to rip off the sides like you do, you know, some checks that you get. And so those are already pre-sealed, so those would go in a separate batch.
And would that include things like applications for an absentee ballot, the ballot itself?
Well, the registrar has their own postage meter. I'm glad you brought that up, by the way. There are two other postage meters in town, but they have different leases. So we're hoping that if this works out, that we may be able to bring them in as well. But right now, they're better off staying on the leases that they have with the machines.
Lisa, I want to see the 90 days first.
Yeah, that makes sense. And so how will you assess that?
Well, the driver that we would have, he has a sheet that he has to fill out, all the stops that he goes to. He would be able to tell us exactly how much time he spends at each location, and then we'll be able to calculate whether, you know, it's saving us money. It definitely will save the town money. The board, the board, it may be a little bit different for them.
Yeah. So the really, the biggest thing is the time and the savings of employee time plus the actual dollar expenditure?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. They also do the, the post office now has, you know, the return receipt requested, the traditional green card that goes on the back of the envelope. They will do it electronically, so that we can check things electronically. We don't have to use that paper. It's $1.50 cheaper to use that service as opposed to using the green cards.
Bill.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure that this is all squared away, but since what we're being asked to approve tonight is a trial, what contingency is there if the trial, if for whatever reason the trial is unsuccessful? I presume we're not yet terminating the Pitney Bowes lease?
Yeah, that's what she said. We're not terminating it, we're keeping it during the 90 days.
I missed that, I'm sorry.
So we would just seamlessly stay with who we have. Mary Ann.
We have a postal, postage increase in July 1st to 73 cents, right?
I'm not, through the mayor, I am, I'm not sure the amount of the increase, but it will, the postage meter that we have will go up automatically. Corporate Mailing Services has guaranteed that the span would be the same.
Is your microphone on?
When I saw it, I said, oh, no, should I buy books of stamps ahead of time because it's going up 5 cents?
Yeah, buy them ahead of time.
Yeah.
Recommend that to everybody.
So I just give everybody a heads up. Thanks.
That's why they make the forever stamps. It's wonderful.
There was one other thing that we investigated. Now, any day of the week, any time of the day, you could mail something through the postage meter. With Corporate Mailing Services, they only work Monday through Friday. So if something were to occur that you needed to do something right away, we were going to buy forever stamps and put them in the vault both at the Board of Ed and here, so that that mail could still go out in a timely way. We wouldn't have to wait until Monday.
And that's rare because nobody works on the weekends, so, yeah. All right. Brian.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Latt, good to see you, as always.
Nice to see you as well.
68 cents compared to the 61 cents for Pitney Bowes, is that just labor or labor and postage?
61 cents? The 61 cents is, they have an itemized list, so if you, if they're going to take the mail and stamp it and seal it, that's the price for 61 cents. If you're, if you're going to have to have them take 500 letters and fold them and put them in a windowed envelope, then you would pay an additional fee, but it still does not reach the 68 cents.
So we just hand them, here's 500 letters and here's 500 envelopes?
Mm-hmm.
And the guy just, they process them?
Are you talking about folding?
Well, yeah, so we have, we have something going out, mailing going out. So here's, we're mailing out to 500 people, so you just give them 500 pre-painted sheets of paper and 500 envelopes? That's what you give the guy, and he just takes that gross thing?
It depends, it depends on the mailing. If you're going to use windowed envelopes, then it has to be folded a certain way. We have to let them know in advance that something like that is going to go out, but we do that already, because the Board of Ed will let us know that we need to add postage to the postage machine, so I think it will be fine.
Sure. So it's even cheaper when we do something registered with, with, you know, planning and zoning, when you have to notice the butters or something?
That's correct.
Yeah.
We are encouraging everyone to send out as much as they can electronically. Most of the boards and commissions do that now.
Okay. Time list for person cost, there was one other thing I thought of. Well, it's lost to eternity, I guess. Well, you'll let us know in nine, in, well, you said 90 days, but you're going to make a decision before then, right?
Yeah, I would probably come back to you in the 60 days.
Yeah. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate the effort, save us money and do things more efficiently. Thank you.
And Laura, you were right on the money on the fact that we have town employees who go to the post office, and a lot of them are sending certified letters. Now, this, this company will take it, so there's no travel time, there's no disruption of the person's day. We can have that person still doing their job rather than delivering the mail down to the post office. So I think this is a good deal all around. Took a while for me to buy into it, but listening to how the experience the other towns are having, it looks like it works pretty well. All right, any other questions? Phyllis, second time.
Thank you. Through you. You brought up the idea of the windowed envelope, so things can be pre-addressed, but what about the, which I, I, excuse me, with regular envelopes, how will they get addressed? And I will say, I prefer them because those are recyclable. Those little windows mess up the recycling. I stand there by the recycling, ripping them out, but I don't think most people do.
Okay. So you want to know how a regular letter would go out?
Yeah. Who does the addressing?
You would, I would do my mail, and anyone else would do their own mail. It would just not be sealed.
Okay.
And then it would go out unsealed, and they would put it through their machine.
Okay. So things like tax notices would go in a windowed envelope, so you wouldn't be having them trying to match my tax bill with an envelope with my name?
Well, the tax bills are mailed out by Well, the tax bills are mailed out by QDS, we don't do them.
A different service.
Ah, okay. All right. But anything of that nature, that my, you know, I think of when I had to put report cards in the right envelope, I would take them out and check them again, but so, how would that work?
Through you, Mayor. I use the windowed envelope example because we ask them about everything we could possibly think of that we might want to mail. So for the most part, I would say probably 95% of the time, they're regular envelopes, that someone is sending a letter, they address the envelope, they put the letter in the envelope, and then it would just go to Corporate Mailing Services to be stamped.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Brian Minitz?
Mr. Mayor, the Town Council waves a reading in the minutes of the special Town Council meeting of April 23rd, 2024, and that minutes of said meeting be approved.
Seconded by Laura. Are there any corrections or deletions? No? All those in favor? Abstention? One abstention. Phyllis? Right, Brian?
Mr. Mayor, a motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Mary Ann. All those in favor? Unanimous. Have a good night, everybody.